While the focus of discussion has been about tennis courts, a key component is the relocation of the ball fields at Veterans Memorial Park and is an expensive part of the project. We however must not sacrifice one recreation program at the expense of another recreation program. The ball fields generate tremendous traffic and I could not support any tennis proposal without the complete replacement of the ball fields at our sportsplex. A recent town hall meeting in the 3rd district made it clear that there was solid and strong support for the development of the remainder of Veterans Memorial Park. And that's what I've heard most often, redeveloping Veterans Memorial Park. I have reviewed the SFA report multiple times and I've listened to ideas and suggestions from citizens throughout Florence. It is my recommendation to this council that we move forward with the overall redevelopment of Veterans Memorial Park and relocate the ball fields to the sportsplex. Florence is already known throughout the state and the southeast for its extraordinary recreation facilities. This project will provide facilities for all citizens of Florence and enhance our quality of life. I have asked Melissa Bailey, our Director of Planning, to present what I think is a beautiful concept on the redevelopment of Veterans Memorial Park and then Dan Barker, our Treasurer and Chief Accountant, will address the financial issues. Melissa?
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. Is that coming through? Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today on design concept for the redevelopment of Veterans Memorial Park. Some of you may have seen this concept in the past, there have been a few tweaks since then, but I have about five slides just to share a bit of information shortly from a historical perspective in relationship to the city's comprehensive plan and then much more time spent on the actual concept itself. Appreciate Tina Irons moving through the slides for me. We couldn't get the remote to work a little earlier, so go ahead, thank you. So, everything we do starts with the comprehensive plan and certainly redevelopment of existing parks or the building of new ones would not be any different. Remembering that Florence's comprehensive plan is a citywide strategic development concept which builds on the overall image of the city and the value of its physical setting. And those are not words that were written by a consultant or even anyone in the department that came from the citizens who participated in our months and months of public involvement on the plan itself. Public investment and improvement is a basic element of this strategic development plan such as these four categories, the third being of course citywide parks and recreation centers which we all hold very near and dear to our hearts here in Florence. Developmental patterns will not only support such public investment and improvement but developmental patterns should be coordinated with the plans for public investment and Under the comprehensive plan, we organize our development into what we call activity centers which are magnets for development. There are four basic types of activity centers, those that are listed there, one of them being recreational. These activity centers do support our neighborhoods, that is a basic facet of each activity center that is created as a result of the comprehensive plan, as a result of any new development or redevelopment. They are organized throughout the city in ways which positively affect our quality of life here in Florence, our natural environment which we have an abundance of and we take advantage of that resource but we also cherish it, and the transportation network. Directly from our comprehensive plan is this excerpt here at the bottom. "The city's park and recreation system, including passive and active parks and outdoor recreation facilities, will be enlarged, expanded, and focused on the needs of neighborhoods to meet the needs of the city's growing population." For Veterans Memorial Park, we know that it serves as a major anchor for our park and greenway system. And I'm going to step away from the microphone for just a second, come with me. You back up a little spot please. What you see here are our park and recreation activity centers, some of these are new nodes which we will base, you know, future development plans on, but here it's a little difficult to see here, but what you would note is that this node for Veterans Park is a little bigger than some of the neighborhood facilities that we have and that's because it is a major anchor point for our greenway and park system. In fact, go ahead. In fact, Veterans Park provides a connectivity point for River Heritage. You know, Veterans Park, it may you remember when it was referred to as Point Park. I think Veterans Memorial Park is much more fitting and certainly respectful of the memorial that is there. But Veterans Park came much, it's much, not as new, I'll find the right word there, as our River Heritage system. So its redevelopment along with the investment that has been made at River Heritage Park with the interactive fountain and the pavilion and the cascading waterfall and then also the investment made at Patton Island Overlook and eventually the connection in River Heritage Phase III. That critical connection along with the development of Veterans Park makes a complete connection with our entire greenway. So that from a bird's eye long range view is what eventually we can celebrate. Also, the redevelopment of Veterans Memorial Park was included in the 2000 Facilities Assessment which was a product of the Planning Department and the Department of Parks and Recreation. It's also been in the city's comprehensive plan, including the current plan. The current design concept, which we're getting to on the next slide, was created in 2014 as the result of two studies, one done for Veterans and one done for McFarland Park with a couple of tweaks in 2015 and 16. The elements that you see within this design concept was derived from surveying of those that utilize our park and recreation system and then also just general community feedback on things that they would like to see in terms of active and passive parks. So with that, we have the design concept for redevelopment of Veterans Park. Not sure exactly if the council wants to go through each of the elements. I can certainly, you know, point out some of the key features, but what I want to draw attention to the most is this overall development concept. It's not single use. In fact, as part of the facilities assessment and as we have noted throughout our comprehensive planning process, having single use parks of this magnitude would not invite the neighborhood element of connectivity, it wouldn't drive even the more passive or active parks. When you have a piece of property this size incorporating, you know, more than a single use is a much better, you know, use of the resource than it would be just to have the one.
Melissa, why don't you get a couple, four or five other ones?
Sure. I don't know why I'm getting the, are y'all getting the feedback because it's coming back at me as well. Okay. So hopefully I can speak loud enough for everyone to hear. And I will say that for the amphitheater of others in the land, the same emphasis is being projected on the screen there to our right as well. So we have the overall development concept which does encompass the full acreage available at Veterans. It does not have development of all of the acreage, but it is taking advantage of some of the overlook points into the Tennessee River, for example. Here at the point, we have an amphitheater along with an entryway into it. We also have a picnic area that is located here in the most south western part of the park. We also have a monument of recognition for the Veterans Memorial along with dedicated space for the expansion of that memorial. Also, because of the significance of the memorial and to pay homage to that memorial, we have a gateway that's here that will not only draw the eye there from an aesthetic way but pay that respect to the memorial that we have and its significance. We have camping areas here for RV parking. We also have, and you can see it on your copies, these light nodes that are numbered, that is the redesigned disc golf course. That is included as part of the overall concept. It does include the, it does include elements for tennis but along with all of the other elements as well for the overall concept. Plenty of parking areas that are not clustered in one location. We've got some that are here on the north and northwestern side of the concept. We have some down in this area for the picnic area and Saturday Night Park for not only multiple events that can go on simultaneously, both passive and active recreation that also for overflow have a very large event for something going on. There are, anywhere obviously that you sit around the space is preservation of green space to balance out the development of the park study along with those natural areas and also the outdoor resources and stuff like that. And I did mention overlook points of the river. There are several places, particularly down there in the middle area and a couple of disc golf holes where the use of water will, once again, come back to.
Good.
Yes. There are walking trails that are incorporated throughout the park already within the concept. There's also places that those could be tweaked removed or added as they are needed or as we get into the planning and development stage, it will need to add some more of those, you know, provisions for connectivity that I talked about incorporated as well and I think just right. All of the elements that are named in for a public space.
Council, any questions?
Any. Excuse me, Melissa, you pointed out picnic, I think, area there. I know currently there are approximately five pavilions there that we've basically done a little painting of. Would you see any of those staying or is that kind of focus you have for picnic for different areas of the park?
Yes. So what is, what is part of the conceptual, you'll see here, one, two, three, four pavilion areas that are, they are located within the same geographic area that's spaced enough apart that, you know, you don't have the, you know, disturbance from one area or the other. But they are clustered in this area that have been used just for, you know, having lunch on weekday when you don't want to stay in or, you know, anybody who doesn't have a water park that uses that.
Would you anticipate approximate ability to come from, say, the Marriott across the road to hit a trail straight from there or how would that work?
Certainly we would want to make the connectivity to our other public investment, most always have public investment in our heritage park. And of course we have an extension of that that is, you know, on the drawing board. So I think making that connection is important. It ties back into that overall connecting all of our green spaces and creation of that greenway. With the Wilson Mall is not open as it used to be, it is still functioning, but we do find it closed often. So the traffic that is on this portion of Foxborough Parkway is not as it used to be. So whether or not this particular crossing here to get to River Heritage Park is an accurate crossing or could be some type of, it has to be raised for whatever reason, that's something we'll have to look at in the design.
My question is, I'm assuming the ball field and the football soccer field on the front, this part of the water part of the property won't be affected by this at all?
Actually, within this design concept, the single baseball field that is there is remaining, is not part of this overall concept. You know, certainly if that were to be relocated somewhere and we had a plan for that space, then, you know, I suppose it would be available, but for the concept that you're seeing, those are not allowed for the redevelopment or the redevelopment of the park.
Melissa, you mentioned earlier that a great deal of this comprehensive plan is based on some conversations you had with others and surveying of folks and meetings to generate ideas about what it is they would like to see. And I noticed that P is a roach's course. Do you have, do you have that list? Did we incorporate all those ideas? And then the second part of that question is, do we have any current usage numbers? How many people use the disc golf? How many are using the pavilions? How is the park being used currently and how frequently?
Sure. So the surveying and the community feedback was instituted and collected within the Parks and Recreation Department. I know we have some folks here that may be able to speak to that. I'm going to have to assume that they have, you know, that information. I know a great deal of time was spent on each of these elements, so I imagine that, you know, that survey and that community feedback is well documented. At the same time, we do have a use of facility usage rules. Having those and knowing that, you know, folks rent certain aspects of the park, I would assume there are some usage numbers as far as disc golf. There is a community that supports and plays disc golf and certain of that park and that personnel have had interactions with them as well. Knowing how often they play is a real possibility, it's just a question.
Melissa, one of the questions I've been asked, and you may not be able to answer this, I'm not sure, you seem to know your stuff when it comes to how things are being going with this program.
Pressure.
Right? One of the things that I keep being asked, and I believe I've given the most educated answer that I have not been there several years ago, was can you tell why tennis specifically, the mayor touched on it, on why tennis here, but I've been asked, why not a water park? Why not something like, you know, anything like that? Now I know that there's an answer behind it, but I'd like it for the public's knowledge.
Sure. So in terms of, and certainly, for the knowledge that I have with the two aren't really related, the water park versus tennis, I do know that early on in the planning stages of the RSA project that, you know, we learned, I learned, others, you know, may have already known, but certainly myself, learned that the restrictions on the use of this property are pretty high. And, you know, I do remember, you know, 15 years ago, in my tenure, that there were, you know, certain projects that came up from time to time that were immediately, you know, stripped and out of possibility. It is my recollection, I'm trying to find my safe for this, but it's my recollection that a water park was not an allowable use under that requirement. You know, we have long-term easements to this property from TBA. So coordination with them will, regardless of what their use is, will always be, you know, a first priority. You know, they will determine whether we will or not. So that's how I can answer, you know, that particular facility. In terms of tennis, from the time that this particular concept was created, the presence of tennis as, you know, an active recreational element was there. It may have gone through some iterations of how many and what kind and what configuration, but it was one of those elements and it's mentioned in the 2000 Facilities Assessment that I brought up in the PowerPoint as being one of those elements that the community and our surveying felt like we were lacking in facilities. So it's just one of the elements.
Can I make one more point? I talked to Melissa about this. When, back in 2014, when we allocated some funds toward a master plan for both Veterans and McFarland, one of the focuses we had as we gathered information, they hadn't information before long, was, one frustrating part of this was that making sure we had TBA approvals along the way. So we tried to be very deliberate as we looked at all these things, that we'd go ahead and let them be aware of what we're thinking so we wouldn't go too far astray as that went along. So I think that worked out very well. I know Todd and Tina worked closely with them, keeping them informed of the kinds of things that we had on the list. And if they saw one that didn't need to be on there, obviously, that was removed. So that was a real focus because the TBA part of it was a little frustrating, but as long as we kept it in the loop, I think it was very helpful in the process.
Melissa, I'll go. Back when we, I remember the public park party, which 10 years ago we entered an agreement with Dr. Bronner. There were several agreements, building a hotel, renovation of a conference center, renovation of a tower, and we constructed two golf courses. And life's agreement was an attraction for Veterans Park. And the PBA, we set aside $2 million for that attraction. Part of the agreement was it would be approved by Dr. Bronner and TBA. We, 10, 11 years, we've been trying to find up an attraction that everybody could agree on. Several years ago, there was a group thing with a tennis concept and they presented it to Dr. Bronner and he recommended that and it's approved. Took about six months, I believe, to get it approved, TBA, and they approved it. So to get to $2 million for the park, all that had to be approved by TBA, Dr. Bronner, C and TBA. And during all that, Melissa mentioned, we, Mayor and I, know we went somewhere, used to go flew up to Chicago, look at the water park, looked at that, was in TBA, and they personally turned that down on several things. I think a Bass Pro, just Dad, it was presented, it was turned down. We've had some botanical gardens and other things, that was turned down, but Dr. Bronner told us, we didn't feel comfortable it had been an attraction before that. That's the tennis was again approved by Dr. Bronner and the local, at our committee.
Well there, you know, I had a community meeting recently and one of the, one of the things that we spoke about, what was, when we presented what the proposal was, and I listened to the, to everybody coming up afterwards, one of the main concerns was keeping Veterans Park a sacred place and for its name's sake as well as it being such a, I guess, a dominant roof of the mainstays of Florence. It's just a beautiful piece of property and I've had a lot of opinions come to me about what should, what should be in there, whether it be a water park or a Bass Pro shop or so forth. But one thing everybody agrees on is keeping it to the level where the park itself can be used by all citizens of Florence and not just by a select few. But, just like with disc golf, a select few play it, but it's, I think it's, you know, it's a great thing. I think that it will have to be, fit the mold for all the citizens of Florence to enjoy. So thank you for that information on that.
Also, it's the total acreage in the park, how many acreage in total Veterans?
It's 20 acres.
The total park?
Eighty.
Eighty, yeah, eighty-eight in, oh, the eighty-eighth, I think the tennis complex takes up, what? Thirteen.
Thirteen.
So thirteen, so something around 70, 75 acres remain for redevelopment, which this is showing other amount to be incorporated with some tennis.
And I think it, maybe one last comment from the planning side of things is that the list of uses that are here is not just a conglomeration of, I mean, those are the things we don't have or things we do have that need to be redone. As you have, you know, time to digest it and really look through it, what we really like about the combination of these elements is that you wouldn't, you would not want them necessarily standing on their own, all by themselves in one, you know, park all to themselves, but they can stand by themselves. They have the ability to be attractive to, you know, those that are interested or are those that, you know, see it as a hobby or, you know, are just curious. But together, they also don't compete with each other. They are complementary to one to the other and with the vast amount of property that we have and even incorporating all these elements, you can see clearly we're not taking up every square inch of this beautiful, you know, natural resource, but these elements can coexist with one another. This would not be a situation where you would need to shut down the entire park for one activity. You know, they can coexist and, you know, I think a true public space is what we can see from this concept.
Yes, I have enough questions. Thank you, Melissa. We appreciate your.
Absolutely.
And you want to kind of go with the conception?
Not really, I guess.
You know, the finance guy is not always the popular guy in the bunch, and when this program or this project was first presented, uh, by SFA, I'll sit again on the meeting, I sat there and shook my head the whole time, 'cause I have, I have to do it sometimes. We got down to the end, and the question comes up of what do you think? Again, forty. I got several phone calls from those sitting up there, and that was my answer to them at times. General fund cannot take on the additional risk of the operation of a tennis complex, the additional sports facilities, as well as the park. In concept, we initially looked at just the tennis project, the tennis complex, and in looking at the tennis complex, what would it take to operate the tennis complex and to build it? If we were looking at just the tennis complex and looking at financing it with a, a lodging tax, a three percent lodging tax will make the tennis complex a viable project as a standalone project. If that's all the project consisted of, was building a tennis complex on property that we already own, the lodging tax would not only pay the debt service on it, but it would provide the cushion for operations of the tennis complex. The top page of the handouts that I just gave you is SFA's operational, uh, performance projections for the first five years, with two changes made, and two changes are changes that I made, uh, from some earlier conversations and questions we had, and that's in the secondary revenue, uh, wine items. Secondary revenue in, in SFA's proposal consisted of UNA's participation, Florence Board of Education's participation, uh, perhaps Waterdale County Schools' participation, and it involved the commitment or participation of other entities that we did not have a commitment from. So, that number was somewhat scary in the initial presentation, and that we were expecting to get a sizable piece of the revenue required to operate the facility from sources that we did not have a commitment from. Since that time, we do have commitments from several of these organizations. UNA has stepped up to the plate with a million dollar commitment to the project. Board of Education, City of Florence has stepped forward. There are talks going on with the county now, so there are other entities that are stepping up to provide the funding in, well, they were referring as, referring to as secondary income, secondary revenue. However, conservatively, we rolled that number back to about half of what they had initially projected in there. That moved a hundred and five thousand dollars out of their projection. It still left the project viable with a three percent lodging tax. When I say viable, I'm saying it will pay for the construction, the debt service on that construction, as well as a reasonable reserve for operations. What it would not pay for is the relocation of the ball fields or any other park improvements in Veterans Park. The ball fields are an integral part of our system in our athletics now, and there are those that says that we can't do without them, and we are rather, rather dependent upon those fields. So, the relocation of those fields has to give great consideration in looking at the project. Is the relocation of the ball fields part of the project? Yes, it has to be. My argument is if you're acquiring land for a project and you're having to do demolition or site prep, that's part of the cost of the acquisition. So, in this case, we do have an asset that we're having to, to give consideration to because of its usage and its value to the city, and that must be the relocation of ball fields. So, it got to the point there where it was hard to segregate or separate those two projects. They overlap as such that you really can't do one without doing the other. Looking at the financing with both projects, if you look at the top of the front page, the first little column there gives you the tennis complex. The estimated construction on it is 6.6 million, two million coming from the Public Park Authority, which believed 4.6 million to be borrowed on a debt service of 20 years at three percent would be approximately $310,000 a year house payment. A three percent lodging tax produces about $594,000. In that case, that would produce a $285,000 surplus, and that surplus is the capital replacement cost, as well as your, uh, potential operating deficit of, of the tennis complex. So, again, if we evaluate the tennis complex by itself, it will work, but I believe the decision there is that it can't be built by itself. What would it take if we looked at doing just the relocation of the ball fields and the tennis complex? It would take a, a lodging tax of 3.75%. You'll turn to your second page, at the top, each of those items on that second page is the bottom portion of your first page restatement. At three percent at the top, that's the ball fields and the tennis complex, as you see, it's a red number at the bottom. You drop down to 3.75, and it does begin to produce a surplus, based on the operational projections of SFA. That is a very marginal surplus, but it is a surplus that puts the project in the blank. So, is it a viable project to relocate the ball fields and to build a tennis complex? It is if we were to finance it with 3.75 lodging tax. Based on the conversations and input that many of y'all have had in, from your district and, and the conversations that we've had amongst ourselves, this is more than just a tennis complex, and it's more than just relocation of ball fields. It is the revitalization, redevelopment of Veterans Park, and there's several other amenities in that park that serve us more than just the ball players and the tennis players. So, the question then became, how do we provide the funding to redevelop Veterans Park? Uh, we looked at the incremental increases in lodging taxes, this is what we had looked at for financing the project, and what we found was if we went to a five percent lodging tax, and y'all remember, early on, when we were working with some numbers, we were looking at possibly a five percent adjusted into tennis complex and to relocate the ball fields. Well, after putting the pencil to the paper, we found that we could produce an additional $4 million in debt service that could be used to redevelop, to revitalize the remainder of the park and do an entire project of the park and not just a tennis complex, or not just relocation of the ball fields. What a five percent lodging tax would produce is sufficient funds to provide the debt service for tennis complex, relocation of the ball fields, as well as the revitalization of Veterans So, project can be done, it depends on the scope of the project as far as how much of a project are we going to do or do we need to do? And then the question, how do we finance that project? You've got various stages of the projects that you develop out, and the cost accordingly to finance those. So, the answer is yes, it can be done. The question is, can I have one more question? Questions?
Dan, do you know what we pay to maintain the park now?
No, because it, it, we, all park expenses are accumulated in one department, reserved to its parks, each park is not separated out with its own staff and its own crew. We could come up with some pretty good estimates knowing what we have to do to allocate to park, if it is, I guess.
Do you feel like this will require any additional subsidy outside of the lodging tax increase from the city?
Based on the numbers that, that we're using here and the projections, the surplus that is produced should be sufficient to operate.
Dan, uh, has there been any consideration given so far as for if, if they were to do this and they were to put in, let's say, the, uh, RV camping and so forth? Now, that was shut down several years ago, and that was a revenue generator, is that correct? Now, if something like that, minimal cost, maximum return on it, on a, on a project like that that might be incorporated at this redevelopment?
Yes, and, and the, uh, the camping area is part of the project as far as looking at it, and yes, it does produce revenue, and that would be given consideration.
Has it been given consideration, has it been?
Point no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Likewise, you have pavilion ramp and those type things, that, you know, the revenue is not significant when you're working immediately, but it does have impact, yes.
Enough questions.
So, I can do that.
No, I think it's a good plan, and, um, but I say that, yes, we have University of North Alabama putting in over a million dollars in the facility to make it viable, Florence City Schools have joined in, uh, what, 300,000, got letters of commitment, then we get a $2 million, uh, commitment from RSA to, in the total park, so that helps out the, first time I've seen all the entities come together, well, project of this magnitude, plus I think as you mentioned, it's a lot besides tennis, it's redevelopment of the total park, these park trails, you're out there.
This literally impacts the entire citizenry of the park, over the years, how many of us have been to a Veterans Union out there, and how long has it been since you've been born out there? It has been sort of neglected over time, by governing, by all of it.
Okay, sure. Anyone else have any?
As I, I remember when, when it was Point Park, we played softball out there, that park was a very nice park at the beginning, um, because of the unknown of what we'll do with it, it's kind of been, it neglected in a way. I know there's a lot of softball activity on those fields from spring to fall, uh, that's something that was looked at as far as, do we need those fields, or can we do away with them? And the answer is, we, those things are used very heavily, um, so yes, we do need those fields, and if we do away with them, uh, it's regurgitating, the softball, baseball, tournaments and practices that they do at the sportsplex. I just cannot, uh, support just a tennis complex by itself. I can support, and I've said all along, make it a park. I mean, it's a park, it's been a park, let's make it a park. So, that's, that's where I'm, I'm leaning towards now, not just tennis by itself, but before, make it a park, well, it's a beautiful piece of property out there. It's a really ass, real asset to, to the City of Florence, that's just been sitting there for years, uh, that's not really doing anybody any good. Like I said, I used to play softball out there in my younger days, just a couple of years ago, and, uh, and, and family picnics and church picnics, and we'd have church picnics and then go play, have a pickup softball game. So, it's a, a really, uh, big park, or can be a, a real, a large park to our parks and rec for the City of Florence, and that's, that's, I'd like to see the big man park, not just, not just tennis.
Yeah, I like your comment.
Sure.
Uh, I think, I think David certainly mentioned it as well as Melissa and others, uh, my mem, my first memory of Point Park when I came to Florence was, uh, Mr. Spain, I was going to the church he attended, and they were working toward the dedication of the memorial out there, and I've watched that over the years, and, um, I'm just amazed, been to numerous events, uh, for our veterans, uh, what a, indeed a respectful place it is, and I certainly applaud the, the option to make sure that that remains, uh, a first class for the future, and it obviously, some time's been spent here to make it, make it so, and, and I'm very pleased with what's there, and I hope we, I certainly like the option to, at some point, give them some space to expand if they need to. I, I think that respect is ultimately in part of this, as well as making it for all citizens.
One of the, uh, main concerns that I've been getting feedback on for the past couple of weeks was indeed the placement of the ball fields from the park. Um, I understand that a lot of citizens have some, some issues with that. What I have, what I have found in my research and study for the past few weeks involving those ball fields, and actually my own homework going over there, and somebody probably saw some of my, my live video footage going over there, but, uh, the ball fields being removed, mainly from what I know, most of them are used primarily for practices and, and so forth from, from leagues, and, uh, I think that it's important that if this does go through, that we do make sure that they are, they stay within Florence going out to the sportsplex, so I know how important that is. Uh, as far as pickup games and some of the things that we used to do when we were kids and everything, um, it's good to see that there is still a ballpark staying there for such activities, and, um, you know, I hope that Florence Park and Rec emphasizes that, and also that there are two more fields within District Three, one being over Broadway Rack and one over at Whedon School. So, the district itself is losing, would be losing a few, but there are still, still ball fields there for, uh, for people to go and take advantage of. Some of the issues I had with tennis coming in, I wanted to make sure, and one of the questions I asked this morning of someone is, you know, there are a lot of underprivileged youth in the area, and I don't want anyone excluded because they feel like something's coming in and people aren't going to be a part of it. So, one of the questions that I had was, if, if something like this were to go through while we're thinking about it, what does, what is that going to do for the area? What is the USTA, what are the tennis people wanting to do to help some of the underprivileged youth in, in the district in which this is being proposed? And, uh, I was satisfied with the answer I, I received, and that was that there are grant programs out there to, uh, to help people come in and actually, um, do things like purchase equipment if they can't afford it, um, and also youth camps and so forth, and I think that that is, that's a great thing for the district that I represent, because we want everybody to be a part of, part of the community and to get out there and experience something new, and I want that to be available for them. So, that was the answer I received, and I was happy to know that they had been thinking, forward-thinking about my district in that answer.
I, I have a question. Um, if this were to go through and there was a tennis, um, complex built there, and the pavilions, certainly, that park certainly needs a facelift, but with two events being able to go on at the same time, perhaps there's a tournament, and if someone wanted to rent pavilions, would all that be allowed to happen at the same time? Yes, okay, thank you.
That's the blessing of the purpose of the park.
Right, I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure to.
And adding to that, Melissa and Dan, will some of these projects that are included in this multi-use project be free for use for the public? Kind of disc golf is, we pay for the pavilions now, will we have that broad of an opportunity for folks at all levels to participate?
I mean, I would think so, that would not be, I think they're intended to be just like, uh, something will be paid for some.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dan, let me follow up on the financing for a minute. So with your numbers, we were able to go ahead and, and complete the tennis complex. We have $2,650,000, $6,450,000, $2,000,000 coming from the Public Park Authority. reduces that project to $4.5 million. We have $3.2 million estimated for relocation of ball field. And at 5%, we can do that, those two, plus we have $4 million additional funds to redevelopment of the park. And included in that is the operations of the tennis court. And that, which also makes sense, is the commitment from UNA, which I want to stress in Florence City Schools. Bryce, I think I saw come in, but I know UNA has worked with, hard with the Ad-Hoc Committee as the Florence City Schools. And this is going to be their home courts. There's a possibility that they go ahead and add, I know, additional dressing rooms and lockers for future tournaments. And also Florence City Schools are going to play their home games on this, on these courts. Also in operations, UNA has also agreed to several in-kind payments of, for instance, they will use students as interns to have manage the facility, tennis facility when they have tournaments or when the schools or the city or the league has tournaments. Plus, they'll use their website, their web department, their audio visual and plus the schools will play all, as I mentioned, all their tournaments and the states there, and state tournament there. Plus, they'll use their audio visual and different departments to promote the area too. So not only are they going to participate in the otherwise, but with other in-kind and other, which is a big commitment.
Dick, do we, we have in kind of firm numbers about approximately how many students in Florence City Schools and how many students in Lauderdale County play tennis?
But Bryce, Bryce, how many UNA stu... what was your question?
I mean, how many Florence City and how many Lauderdale County approximately?
We've got six in Florence High School.
And I couldn't, Bryce, do you have?
I mean, you look at, you're looking, you just count up the high schools and I don't know. I mean, I don't have many kids I've got, but I don't have any county schools. I know how many teams there are, boys and girls teams. Each team got about eight kids, ten kids. I know Florence's got a pretty high number, but you can count the counties, smaller number, but I don't have that number though. I think that county schools, Brooks High, I mean county schools there, Brooks High School plays at Killen Court. Killen Court, Lauderdale County plays at the Rogerswood Courts. So the possibility could be Wilson Central and Rogers that may or may not have tennis programs, but they're looking to start tennis programs or enhance what they are. They may be using our Scott Creek Court.
Dan, one of the other, and may put you on the spot because you're the finance guy. One of the, one of the concerns I had was, of course, with the concerns that some of the hoteliers, you know, have had with a, with a lodging tax of, you know, 3%, 5%. I know 5% was, was initially what the plan was. And then that, that went down and now we're, we're back at the 5. What, do you happen to know what the range is with Florence and the surrounding areas? If this was to go through, what the, would this put us way out from, from everywhere else or would we be on level or would be, we'd be somewhere in the area with it?
Dan, I don't have those numbers listed, but I do have them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or... Again, we have several parks and rigs I know we're, we're here and we appreciate them coming. And also, I know we have several members of Ad-Hoc Committee. We appreciate the work you've done and Bryce and Eddie, thank you for y'all supporting this. Again, as I mentioned, I think what we've come back to is a full redevelopment of Veterans Memorial Park. I mentioned we have eighty, what, 88 acres. We're using 13 for the tennis complex, which is a nucleus to get everything else going. Plus, we have another 65 acres left to for redevelopment of the ball fields, all relocation. Apple Theater, possible music venue there. We've got your walking rail, you've got some campgrounds and you've got approved to Veterans Memorial Park. So we've got a lot of, I don't think we need to overlook the importance of Veterans Memorial upgrading that for additional traction that can be in this traction already, but it improves to that and possible through the, through the 5%.
You have an answer on this one, but I'd like to say it for the, for the public. Did we not seek, or was there not a letter written by the American Legion in reference to, reference to this? Because we don't, I don't want to count out, and I don't think any of us wants to count out what the, what the veterans have done because they keep up this memorial greatly. And I am definitely, definitely want their opinion on, on this project.
You want an answer for that, the blary?
The veterans have been involved with it from the beginning. Their, their interest mostly in the beginning was that to redo the park, you know, make the park look nice. And then the main thing they want is the interest to look like a real first-class entrance for Veterans Park. So we're sure that it does, it's part of the plan. So they, they involved all the way through the park, through the whole thing.
In fact, Coach Buddy Moore is involved in his own Ad-Hoc Committee and he's retired. I forgot, Ryan was pretty high, so, general, I think so. Yeah, that's about as high as you can go. Any other, any other questions? Not, thank everyone for coming and your input. And we'll continue on with our work section. We have several of our... Mayor, did you have anything you needed to say before we closed?
What's your any question?
That's all about that. Thank you. No, we got several. Wait, really, don't lay yet. So we've gone through that one. Is he here, chief?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I'll be very quick. I just have one item on the council...